This is a special event that MS Views and News is providing tonight. Yes, we're the host of it. There are no sponsors, nothing. We're just straight up doing this with Dr. Aaron Boster. And all of you that are online, of course, know Dr. Boster. That's why you're online. All right. It surely wasn't about just being here for Stuart, but we wanted you to, we wanted to do something different tonight. All right. And Dr. Boster and I do this, you know, where we mix things up and we, he's not here to just do a presentation, but he's here to answer questions. And I'm going to start off the questions, but I want you all to ask your questions as well. So firstly, howdy, how are you?
Howdy, it's great to see you. I'm doing really, really well. Thank you.
Awesome.
I'm excited that you guys are creating this opportunity for us to talk. Thank you.
Great. Let's start off something simple. What can you tell us about any emerging therapies for multiple sclerosis at this point in time?
There's a lot to say on that topic, Stuart. I sometimes will say, and I want you to listen to the words carefully. If you have to have MS, now's the best time to have it. Now, I crafted that sentence very carefully because I wouldn't wish MS on anyone. But the reason I say it like that is we have more options to treat MS today than we've ever had ever in the history of my career. And, you know, as we just wrapped up the big ECTRUMS meeting, the buzz on the street is all the new therapies that are coming down the pike. And so there's a lot of things that we're testing that are very exciting. And if I was to share one theme, which is a really important theme, we're looking at therapies that go beyond shutting down relapses and stopping new MRI lesions. We've moved past that. We have drugs that can do that. And a lot of our efforts now are placed appropriately in treating secondary progressive multiple sclerosis, primary progressive multiple sclerosis, with a vision of improving disability progression, slowing brain volume loss, and things like that. And so the future is very, very bright. I still remain very excited about BTK inhibitors. And just following behind them are these FREX molecules that I'm very excited about. So, you know, it's a very exciting time to be involved in MS therapeutics and developing new drugs.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. You know, it's weird because at many of our meetings, you know, these live programs that we do, people come up to me all the time and they say, I was just diagnosed. And I'll answer them with the same thing as you just spoke about that. Yeah, I said, you're lucky. You're lucky you were just diagnosed and that there's 28 medications on the market. I mean, that's a good thing for you. I mean, I remember when I was diagnosed, there were two things on the market. So, you know, it's come a long way.
Amen.
All right, moving along here. So what can you tell us, please, about the high efficacy drugs versus lower efficacy medications? And like, what do you do when your patients come in? And, um, all right, I'll let you take it away. You know what I'm talking about.
This is a very, very important topic. And it's one that I spend a lot of time during my clinic day thinking and talking about. So there are fields within neurology like epilepsy, where there's a bunch of medicines, anti-seizure medicines, and they all have the same efficacy. So there isn't a seizure medicine out there that is superior to a different seizure medicine. And so when epilepsy specialists are picking medicines with patients, they're doing it based on side effect profile, you know, which drug's easier to tolerate. That is not the situation in the setting of multiple sclerosis. When you look at multiple sclerosis disease modifying therapies in 2024, there's really a differentiation between the efficacy of the medicines. There are some medicines that we now consider to be lower efficacy, and I'll define that in a second. We have some drugs that we find to be medium efficacy, and we have some that are high efficacy drugs. And when I say low, medium, high efficacy, I'm talking about commenting on their ability to shut down relapses, their ability to stop new MRI lesions, and their ability to slow disability progression. And there's a raging debate ongoing amongst MS neurologists about the ordering of these medicines. Now, much to my chagrin, the majority of MS treaters still ascribe to something called the escalation model. So the escalation model, which I vehemently disagree with, is a situation where you say, okay, I'm going to start the person with MS on a lower efficacy drug, which is very, very safe. And then we'll see how things go. And if they do well, then I'm a great doctor and they're a great patient and that's a great drug. Next topic, right? But if they don't do well, don't worry, they say, we will simply escalate to a drug which is better. It has more efficacy for MS, but it has a less favorable side effect profile. And then we'll see how we do on that drug. And if on the second drug you do great, well, then I'm a great doctor and you're a great patient. And that's a great drug. Next topic. But if things don't go well, well, don't fret. We'll just escalate to another drug. And that escalation model is used by most MS neurologists, to my chagrin. The, the concept is that they're trying to match efficacy and safety. And I think it's misplaced and I think it's paternalistic. And I think it's really the wrong way to do things. There is now emerging data from very large clinical trial efforts, which are starting to support my biased belief. So it's always wonderful when the data supports the way I feel, which isn't always the case. But I am of the strong opinion that the best way to, to approach multiple sclerosis is to use the most effective drug that you're comfortable taking as early as you're comfortable taking it. And I think what we're starting to see with data is support for that idea. When you start a population of people on a higher efficacy therapy, there's less attacks and less disability progression down the line compared to if you start a group of people on low efficacy therapy. So yes, there's 28 different formulations of MS drugs, which is wonderful. But to go back to your original question, in my practice, I don't use all 28 of them. Because some of them are less effective than others. And I'm trying to use the most effective drug that someone's comfortable taking. That's a great question.
Thank you. All right. So staying similarly on the same line of what we're talking about, what can you tell us about the B-cell depleters and medications? And what is it that, number one, what is it that they do? And where do they rate in rank of efficacy?
Yep. So B-cell depleters are really interesting. When I was in med school, I was taught that MS only affected T cells, that B cells were not involved. And as you can imagine, most of the drugs that came out in the early era were all T cell related drugs. They manipulated T cells. It turns out that we were really wrong in that it's not just about T cells, but B cells also play a very important role in the pathology of MS and making someone with MS get worse. And if you deplete or remove the adult B cells, it's amazing how impactful that is to slow your disease down. So it turns out that the B-cell depleters are now the most utilized category of disease modifying therapy amongst all patients with MS. And they're very, very excited. And so these are things like rituximab or rituxan, which is the oldest one. It's been around the longest. It's not FDA approved, but it works. There's a drug called Trexema, which is a knockoff. It's a biosimilar of rituxan that we sometimes use. Ocrivis, ocrilizumab was the first B-cell depleter to be approved by the FDA and the only drug that is FDA and EMA approved for both relapsing forms of MS and primary progressive MS. Subsequent to ocrivis, there's a drug that came out called Kisemtah, which is ufutumumab. And Kisemtah is a high efficacy B-cell depleter, but it's not an infusion. It's a shot that you give yourself once a month. And so for some patients, that's a much better option. The newest member to join the B-cell depleting market, if you will, is a drug called Bremvi or ublotuximab. Now, I don't make up these names. Now, all of these drugs, rituxan, ocrivis, Kisemtah, Bremvi, are all B-cell depleters. And so the way that they work, they are monoclonal antibodies. So they're smart bombs that you put into the human body and they float around the human body and they identify the adult B cells only. So they can't see the innate immune system. They can't see any other cells in the body. They can't see any T cells. They only see the adult B cells. And they bind to the adult B cells and they make them die. And so they pull the adult B cells out of circulation. Now, the stem cells are still there and they grow back about every six months, which is why a lot of these medicines are given every six months. And the way they work is fascinating. So when my professors told me that MS was a T cell driven disease, they weren't completely wrong because the T cell attacks the brain and spinal cord. Here's the kicker. The T cell is not capable of attacking the brain or spinal cord unless the B cell gets it pissed off, gets it mad. And so that creates this really interesting phenomenon where you need the B cell to upset the T cell to attack you. So if you remove the B cell, the T cell cannot get adequately animated to attack you. And by removing the B cells, by depleting the B cells, we slow the disease down. Now, I use an analogy sometimes when I'm explaining this to patients. I went to a very overpopulated high school. So I graduated with over 700 kids in my class. And the hallways were very crowded and, you know, people would bump into each other. And sometimes if two young men bumped into each other, they had to settle that dispute by meeting behind B building at 3:30 and punching each other in the face. You know, these, these high school egos. And so I would attend some of these social functions where we would see two young pugilists defending their bookbag honor. And I remark that nobody shows up to fight without their buddies. So in this analogy, the guy fighting is the T cell, but all of his friends, those are the B cells. And his friends egg him on, go ahead, man. Whoop his butt. I got you. I'll look out for the teacher. I'll hold your bookbag. Now, if we killed all the friends and the kid shows up to fight and he says, nobody's here, he's going to leave. And that's the way that the B-cell depleters work to slow multiple sclerosis.
Well, thank you for that. And thank you for re-attacking. And for everybody that's online, we did a program last year, I guess it was, with Dr. Boster and Dr. Thrower, where we had the B cell and the T cells. Well, one doctor represented the immune system, the other doctor was attacking the immune system. And if you haven't seen the video, I suggest you go to our YouTube channel and find it. It's called "The Attack on the Immune System." And, uh, and Dr. Boster and Dr. Thrower did a fabulous job on this.
It was a fun night.
It was a fun day, yes. All right. So going a step further with the B cells, there's one that you did not mention that was just FDA approved just a couple of weeks ago. And that is a subQ of ocrilizumab.
That's right.
And what can you tell us about this and how will it? It's, there's, there's a lot of things that are going to work still, how that's actually going to be delivered to the person. But if you could talk anything about it, it would be great.
Absolutely. So drugs have a life cycle. All right. So drugs are born and then they go through a period of about 10 years where the manufacturer makes it and nobody else is allowed to make it. And typically towards the end of the 10-year life cycle, the manufacturer will explore other things they can do with the drug. And so that's what's happened with ocrilizumab, ocrivis. And there's really two things that the manufacturer is looking at. One is using ocrivis in children. And at the Boster Center for MS, we're involved in a trial called the Operetta Trial, where we've enrolled children who have MS. And we're testing ocrivis against a drug that's been approved for kids called Jellinia. And so that's one area where we're studying. The other area is in coming up with a different way to deliver ocrivis. Now, ocrivis is an infusion in the vein. It's given twice a year and it infuses for two and a half hours in my clinic. So that's two and a half hours on the chair. And the manufacturer of ocrivis, a company called Genentech, they've come up with a new way to deliver the medicine, which is not given in the vein, it's given under the skin. And it's called a subcutaneous injection. Now, it's not an injection like an EpiPen or it's not like an insulin injection or a Copaxone injection. It's infused and it's actually kind of like a large volume of fluid which goes under the skin. And it takes, they say 10 minutes. But in reality, by the time you get in, get situated, go through all the rigamarole, initially it's going to be about an hour and a half to get them loaded. And then subsequent injections will be about an hour. And so this is brand new in the United States. It's been FDA approved. It's not easily commercially available just yet. And I think in many clinics and in mine as well, the jury's a little bit out. You know, I've talked to several patients and some people think carving an hour and a half off their infusion sounds great, you know, because that's more time to live life and not be in the infusion center. Other people are concerned about whether it's going to be uncomfortable. And I, as a, as a doctor running a busy infusion clinic, I'm not sure about the advantages to time. You know, I'm not sure that exactly how it's going to shape out. So I think it's going to be very exciting over the next year to see how this unfolds and to see the best use of subQ ocrivis, if it makes sense to use in clinic. Now, one of the things I do want to point out, this is not a self-injection. So you can't take it home and do it on your own, like you do with some of the other medicines like Kisemtah. This must be administered under physician supervision in the clinic. And so you still are coming into clinic twice a year to receive your, your treatment.
Right. So for, there are people asking, what is subQ? Well, subcutaneous is the real name for this, all right?
Under the skin. So there's different routes of administration. So for example, some of the MS medicines like Mavenclad and Tecfidera and Jellinia, those are pills that you swallow. Those are meth pills. Some of the medicines are infused in the vein, like Tyssabri and Lymtrada and Ocrivis and Bremvi. Those are infused in the vein. Other ones are injected into the muscle, like Avenex is an intramuscular injection. But a lot of the medicines are subcutaneous. They're injected under the skin with a little tiny needle that just goes under the skin. So medicines like Betacaron and Rebif and Copaxone are given subcutaneously. Plaguey is given subcutaneously. Kisemtah is given subcutaneously under the skin. And this new version of ocrilizumab is a subcutaneous injection under the skin.
Right. And don't forget Copaxone.
Yeah, that's, yep, absolutely.
That was the original, so.
Amen.
Well, that and Betacaron, right. All right. So are there any meds on the market currently that use both T and, that work for T and B cells?
Yes. So Lymtrada, alentuzumab is a very hardcore medicine. It's maybe, in my opinion, one of the most effective medicines that's available to treat MS. And that medicine works by identifying adult B and T cells and knocking them out of circulation and making them grow back more well behaved. There's another medicine called Mavenclad or cladronine tablets. And it has an impact on both B and T cells. However, the major impact is on the B cells as compared to the T cells. And let me just do a quick rundown in my head. And those are the only drugs that I'm familiar with that affect both the B and the T cells.
That's correct. Thank you very much. That's correct. Listen to me saying that to you, right? So, so tell us about Tyssabri now.
Yep. So Tyssabri came out in 2004. So that's quite some time ago now. And I remember when it came out. Before Tyssabri, all we had was the first line shots. We had Copaxone, Rebif, Betacaron, Avenex. And in hindsight, those injections are considered low efficacy. Nowadays, they're considered low efficacy. When Tyssabri hit the market, and Tyssabri is a high efficacy medicine, it blew us away. It was the most effective drug that we'd ever touched and the most dangerous drug that we had ever touched. Because now, instead of reducing relapse rate by 30% better than placebo, we could reduce it, you know, 60% and we could do it better than some of the drugs. You know, now, instead of slowing disability progression by 30% placebo, we could do 50% better than a drug. I mean, we, we noticed that with Tyssabri, it was really efficacious. We also started to see cases of a rare brain infection, which can be fatal, called PML. And when Tyssabri first came out, it was out for a short period of time. And we discovered the PML infection and took it off the market and studied it to death and put it back on the market within about a year with the JC virus antibody testing. Now, that was a story of 2004 to 2006. And here we are in 2024, having this conversation. What's amazing is, all these years later, Tyssabri remains one of the most effective drugs to treat MS on the market, period. It is still a very high efficacy drug. We've learned a lot using Tyssabri through the years. So many of us, myself included, do not administer Tyssabri every four weeks. We give it every five or every six weeks. Why? Because it works just as well and it's safer. It seems to decrease the risk of PML. I also, at the Boster Center, give Tyssabri over a half an hour, which is off-label. But I give it over a half an hour and I don't monitor afterwards. And so patients who are used to the drug, who have taken it for a long time, they're in and out really, really fast. Now, Tyssabri has an interesting side effect of energy. But not everyone has more energy when they take Tyssabri. But a lot of patients call it their go juice. And when they get it, they really feel charged up and energized. And when someone is a super responder to Tyssabri, I don't want to take them off. Now, Tyssabri is an excellent medicine and we now have the JC virus. So we can check the JC virus tighter. I check it every three months. And if someone is JC virus antibody positive, it does not mean that they're forbidden from having Tyssabri, at least not in my clinic. It means that we have to talk about the statistical risk. And sometimes the risk is very, very low, like a thousandth of a percent. Sometimes the risk can be way high, like 1%. And my opinion, Stuart, is I don't have the right to inform you of your risk aversion. Like, I'm not allowed to be paternalistic and say, you are not allowed to have it and you're allowed that. That's, I don't buy into that. I view my responsibility as to educate the person I'm talking to, to help the family understand the risk profile, including the risk of PML, and then to allow them to make the decision. And I have some patients that are JC virus antibody positive. They've been on Tyssabri forever and they love it and they will not stop. And I'm not going to stop them. I have other patients that are antibody positive and a low titer, but it scares the bejesus out of them. And so we never use the drug. Suffice it to say that Tyssabri remains one of the more effective drugs that we have available. Now, we were talking a second ago about subQ ocrivis. In Europe, they have subQ Tyssabri available now. Now, fortunately or unfortunately, the American FDA did not see fit to approve that here in the United States. So we do not have that formulation available in the US.
When you say the subQ Tyssabri, are you speaking about the same manufacturer as here in the United States? Or are you speaking about the new manufacturer for the, for the?
Biosimilar. So this is, it's actually different. So, so the, the subQ Tyssabri, which is not available in the United States, is a different formulation of Tyssabri. But what Stuart's talking about is actually very exciting. There's a different manufacturer called Sandos. And they've made what's called a biosimilar Tyssabri. And so to explain what I mean by the word biosimilar, when you make a biologic molecule, like a biologic drug like Tyssabri, that's a monoclonal antibody. It's a, it's a biologic agent. The first time you make it, we call that the originator, or like the first one. And then sometimes after the life cycle of the drugs ended, a different manufacturer will recapitulate it. They'll make another antibody which does the exact same thing. And they'll test it in clinical trials, as this company, Sandos, did. They did a trial called the Antelope Trial, where they proved in people with MS that it works just as effective as Tyssabri and has the same side effect profile. And so we will soon see a biosimilar Tyssabri available on the market, which frankly, from a societal standpoint, is a good thing. Because these medicines are very expensive and for some patients, they're actually cost prohibitive. And so having biosimilars tends to be less expensive and therefore makes them more available to more humans, which I think is a good thing.
Great. Great. Thank you for that. For everybody that's come in late, first off, I want to thank you all for being here. Secondly, you should know that this is a MS Views and News program and we are not sponsored to do this event tonight. We just wanted to do it. I'd like to educate you all. So I ask the king to educate, right? All right. So, but for anybody asking questions, just please know that I will get to your questions after I'm done with the questions. Because that's what this program is about. Me first and then you all with the doctor too. I wish I could get, like, see everybody and have you raise your hand so I could ask questions every now and then and say, who's doing this and who's doing that? But we can't do that here. So we'll just have to, you'll have to wait until we're in your town and then show up at our program. We could do it there too.
Amen.
Right. Thank you for that. Now, what do we have next? So next on the list, we were going to talk about clinical trials. Do you see anything currently in clinical trial like a BTK inhibitor or CAR-T therapy that you may want to talk about, please, specifically?
Actually, let's talk about both. Let's start by talking about CAR-T therapy, just because that's not discussed enough. And I think it's really exciting. And I want to spend a few minutes and explain like what the heck the therapy is because I think it's really neat and kind of nerdy. So perfect for Aaron. CAR-T therapy is almost like science fiction. And it was originally invented as a very, very clever way to kill cancer cells. So you have someone who has cancer, has these abnormal cells floating around their body, these cancer cells which do very bad things. And what these smart oncologists figured out is, they took a T cell, part of your immune system, and they added a piece to it, like they glued on a piece to the T cell. So they made like a Frankenstein T cell. And the part they added on is a receptor which identifies the cancer cell. So the Frankenstein molecule that they created is very, very specifically able to find your specific cancer. Not someone else's cancer, but the one you have. And the CAR-T, C-A-R, stands for chimeric antigen receptor. So a chimera, a chimeric molecule has different parts. So the chimeric T cell molecule has the basic T cell molecule and then this Frankenstein part that they attach to it, which binds to your specific cancer. The idea then is, they put these Frankenstein T cells back into your body and they do what they were trained to do. They float around your body and they look for a bad guy. But the specific bad guy is your cancer cell. And then your T cell, part of your immune system, binds to your cancer cell. And then the T cell calls all its friends over and they kill the cancer cell. And that's really neat. So really, you're harnessing your own immune system to knock out a cancer bad guy. And so that's what CAR-T therapy does when you're using it for oncology. Well, recently, some really smart people in my field have asked the question, could we use the same CAR-T therapy to treat MS and NMO and MOG? These are diseases that involve the immune system and they have aberrant cells, like for example, aberrant B cells. So could we make a Frankenstein T cell, which is your T cell, and then we attach, we glue a part on top of it which identifies your naughty B cell, specific for you? The idea, we'd infuse it in the body and it would float around and do what it was trained to do. It would identify those naughty autoreactive cells and pull them out of solution. And so there's been some very early works looking at this very exciting therapy as a potential way of treating multiple sclerosis. And it's really exciting because at least in the setting of cancer, sometimes you clear all the cancer out, like with CAR-T therapy, like, like, almost like a cure, dare I say. And so the question becomes, is that something that we might be able to do in the setting of MS? And so that's very exciting. It's kind of sexy medicine. And at our recent meeting, we, we heard some early results about some, some very exciting trials looking into this. So more to come over the next several years of CAR-T therapy.
Great. Thank you for that. Quick, quick thing on that though. First off, I know how the myocinographe community is waiting for further research on this. That's for MOG, for those that don't know that the two are the same. But going back to what you were just saying about cancer, is this used on people that have advanced stages of cancer or like when they're first diagnosed?
I'll be very honest with you, Stuart. I don't know the answer to that question. I don't want to speak out of school. So I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Keep going with now, we took them to talk about BTK, I guess.
About BTK inhibitors. So, so you know, we've talked about BTK inhibitors, you and I, in the past. And I have several YouTube videos on my channel that talk about BTK inhibitors. They have occupied the space in MS now for well over two years. And there's several ongoing clinical trials studying routine tyrosine kinase inhibitors, BTK inhibitors, for use in multiple sclerosis. And this past year, we started to get a readout on some of the clinical trials. And so I like to just briefly review those. First of all, what is a BTK inhibitor? So routine tyrosine kinase, or BTK, is part of the internal machinery that runs some of the cells in the immune system. One of the cells is the B cell. So let's pretend my phone is a B cell and you stimulate the B cell over here. And then inside the B cell are all these machinery that do various things and they result in, in an output. One of the machines inside the B cell is the BTK. So when you swallow a BTK inhibitor, because these are pills, they bind to the BTK inside the B cell and they break it. They make it not work. They inhibit it. So now, when the B cell is stimulated, the internal machinery doesn't work. And the B cell's not murdered. The B cell's fine. But it can no longer do its immune function of stimulating an auto reactive response. And this is a drug that has been used in cancer. And this is a drug that has been used in cancers very successfully for certain types of B cell cancers. And so it stands to reason that it might be very, very helpful in the setting of multiple sclerosis, because we know that B cells are affected in multiple sclerosis. But that's not the only cell that BTK inhibitors work on. There's another cell, which is involved in MS, called microglia. All right, so microglia are cells, they're not part of the B cells or the T cells. They're actually a different part of the immune system called the innate immune system. And they don't live in the bloodstream like the B and the T cells. These, these microglia actually live in the brain. And we know that they're active in the setting of MS, but we can't reach them with our current therapies. So all of these very exciting, high efficacy therapies can't reach these microglia. BTK inhibitors are small molecules. They can cross the, into the brain, and they can identify and bind to BTK inside microglia and turn them off. So mechanistically, BTK inhibitors bring two things to the table that we've not been able to do before. One is to affect both the innate and the B cell compartments of the immune response. And two is to enter the central compartment into the brain. I would say number three is they don't really increase risk of infection very much. So it stands to reason that they're very exciting molecules to study. Now, there's many, many clinical trials currently ongoing, looking at B cell, BTK inhibitors. And at the Boston Center, we're doing five of them, so it's a very active area of research. To date, there's been three clinical trials that have been read out, where they finished the trial and they presented the results. And the first one occurred last year, and it was a real bummer. It was a drug developed by a company called Sirono, and the drug was called Evo Brutinip. And Evo Brutinip was compared against Abagio in relapsing MS, and it didn't do better than Abagio. Now, what's weird, Stuart, is that in this trial, both drugs did great. The relapse rate for the Evo Brutinip was 0.1, which means one attack every 10 years, which is really, really good. But Abagio also had the same relapse rate, and so Abagio did better than it's ever done in a clinical trial. That stated Evo Brutinip will not see the light of day, and it will not be approved to treat relapsing MS. More recently, in just this past month, at the ECHRMS Congress, they released data on two other BTK trials. One was negative, and one was positive. So to talk about the negative trial, this was a trial that I participated in, called Gemini. In the Gemini trial, they gave people with relapsing MS a BTK inhibitor called Tolobrutinip, or they gave them Abagio, again, in a blinded trial. And the readout is that the drug, the Tolobrutinip BTK inhibitor, did not do better than Abagio, just like with Evo Brutinip, which is a real bummer. And it kind of speaks negatively about the likelihood that we're going to see BTK inhibitors working in relapsing MS. The jury's still out. There are other trials, but at least for this drug, Tolobrutinip, I don't think so. But there was a positive result, and it's a big deal, a really big deal, at least for me. There's a second trial called the Hercules Trial, right, so Hercules. And in the Hercules Trial, we gave Tilobrutinip, the BTK inhibitor, not to people with relapsing MS, but to people that had what's called non-relapsing secondary progressive MS. So these are people with multiple sclerosis, who used to have attacks, but they have not had an attack in many, many years, so on average, seven years. And they're having progression of disability. So that's the type of patient that we enrolled, and we were very active in the Hercules Trial at the Boston Center. And in this trial, people got either BTK or placebo. Now, why placebo? Why not a drug? Because there are no drugs proven to work in non-relapsing secondary progressive MS. Now, against placebo, what we found was the BTK inhibitor successfully clinically and statistically slowed disability progression. For the first time, we were able to find a pill which could slow disability progression in a non-relapsing population of secondary progressive MS. And so that's a very, very exciting result. And it's my opinion that we will probably see this BTK inhibitor, Tolobrutinip, approved for secondary progressive MS. Now, there are trials, there's another trial with Tolobrutinip called the Perseus Trial, which is studying people with primary progressive MS. And we should get a readout on that trial around December, so not that long. And there are several other manufacturers studying different kinds of BTK inhibitors. So for example, we're involved in a trial called the Fenhans Trial, which is looking at a BTK inhibitor called Fenobrutinip in relapsing MS. And there's even trials behind that in Phase II, which are studying BTK inhibitors. And so it's a very robust effort, and it's very, very exciting. And so more to come over the next several months, but that's the most recent updates.
Great, thank you for that. I have actual meetings with medical fairs people. I think next week with, with regard to the Sanofi BTK. And so, I mean, I had heard about the Gemini and the Hercules Trials while ECHRMS was happening, of course. And, and though I have a question for you, the one that is the Hercules Trial for the, for the non-relapsing SPMS, two questions about this. One, for the people to know that are online, specifically, what is non-relapsing SPMS? I mean, can you explain both separately and together?
Yes.
The second question was, what stage is this study in?
So let me answer the questions backwards. So the Hercules Trial is a Phase III trial, Phase III. Though Phase III trials are intended to get a drug approved by the FDA. So they will take the data from the Hercules Phase III Trial and present it to the FDA and ask for approval to make it a medicine available. Now, when you talk about different kinds of MS, it's really sort of a hot topic. And there's a lot of ongoing debate, but I'm going to give you the party line, so that I can explain what the hey, hey, secondary progressive, non-relapsing means. All right, so the most common presentation of multiple sclerosis is people have attacks or relapses, flares, exacerbations, those are all the same things. And if somebody with multiple sclerosis has an attack, then they have a relapsing form of multiple sclerosis. They're at risk of relapses. And we used to say that we would call that relapsing remitting MS. We now call it relapsing MS. And those people are at risk of having more attacks, and they're at risk of progressing in disability separate from attacks, both. As they get older chronologically, like as they age and get gray and bald and stuff like that, the likelihood of a relapse decreases, and the likelihood of progression separate from a relapse goes up. And there are some patients who have had relapses in the past, but they haven't had them in many, many years, like over five years, right? So they haven't had a relapse in quite some time. And in addition to not having a relapse in the recent past, they are getting worse in disability. They're progressing in their disability separate from attacks. And so we call that phenotype of MS, or that flavor of MS, non-relapsing, because they're not having attacks, secondary progressive, because they used to have attacks, multiple sclerosis. And that was the population of people that we studied with the Hercules Trial. The reason that's really important is when you have a population that has both relapses and progression, like an early relapsing population, sometimes treating the relapses drives the answer of the trial. So the statistics are favorable just because of the relapses. So here is a flavor of MS with no relapses, and yet, we were able to slow disability progression. And so that's why it's so darn cool. That's why I'm so excited about it.
Awesome, thank you for that. Going a step further, can you tell us, please, if there are currently any medications for secondary progressive multiple sclerosis, or known as SPMS?
So there's a couple, if you look at the FDA label, one of them has really fallen out of favor, right? And that's a medicine, which is a chemo medicine called Mitazantron, or Novantron. And some of the people on the call may remember it as this blue liquid that would be infused in the vein. Mitazantron got an approval for secondary progressive MS, as well as relapsing MS. And it's been used in both situations. Now, overall, we don't use it anymore because of the risk of cancer and because of the risk of heart damage. And so it's kind of internationally fallen out of favor. There's another drug called Maisent, which is a knockoff of Jellinia. So these are the pills, the S1P1 receptor modulators. And the first one is called Jellinia, or the trade, that's the trade name, Fingolamod. And there's now a second generation of these medicines. And one of the Maisent was studied in secondary progressive MS, and they sought approval. But when you look at the data, what drove the answer was young patients that had attacks. And so I, Aaron, kind of don't buy what they're selling, that that drug by itself does something particularly special with SPMS, because most of the SPMS patients were younger than we would expect, and they had attacks still. So to me, that's categorically a bit different than what we've recently discovered with the BTK inhibitors. One more comment, that just because there's two drugs that have been FDA approved for so-called secondary progressive MS, it doesn't mean that the other drugs don't work, because they do work. But a lot of the impact of the other drugs are in decreasing relapses. And so having something which works in the absence of relapses is particularly special.
Great, thank you for that. Going on to something a little bit different. It's a lot different, it should not even a little bit different. But what can you tell us about Metformin, and what can you tell us about remyelination? And what are the hopes you have of undoing some of the MS damages in their, in coming years, soon coming years?
So, right now, we can't, we cannot cure multiple sclerosis, right? So we do not know how to cure multiple sclerosis. However, it's my belief that the, the path to cure multiple sclerosis involves three kinds of therapies. One kind of therapy we have, and two, we don't have yet, right? So the three kinds of therapies that I think we would need to cure MS hypothetically, one would be a neuroprotective agent to protect the nervous system from damage. And we've been working on that, and we have not been successful in trying to identify a neuroprotective agent. But I think we would need one hypothetically to cure the disease. The second drug that we would need is something to put the myelin back on the nerve. So I'll use this wire, which is charging my computer as an example. There's a plastic coating on the wire, so imagine that the wire is the neuron, and the plastic is the, is the oligodendrocytes, that's the myelin. So in MS, they chew off the myelin, all right, and it's exposed, and then that makes the, the, the wire not work very well. So what we want is, we want to put the myelin back on, like wrap it back up in plastic so that it works again. And that's called a remyelinating agent, and we don't have that yet either, but we're a lot closer. And the third thing, by the way, that we would need, we do have, and that's anti-inflammatory drugs. And so all of the current FDA-approved therapies are anti-inflammatory drugs. So in my mind, the way that we're going to ultimately treat MS is with combinations of therapy, one anti-inflammatory, one neuroprotective, one demyelinated. And we don't have those other two just yet. But I feel like in the demyel, in the remyelinating space, we're a lot closer. Now, there was a question also about this medicine, Metformin. So Metformin is not a drug approved for MS, okay? It's a drug that was invented for, for type 2 diabetes. And it's a drug that some type 2 diabetics take, and it creates a very interesting fasting state in the body, right? So it, it creates this sort of pseudo fasting state, which helps with diabetes control quite beautifully. Interestingly, it appears that there may be some benefits to using Metformin in treating MS. By creating that fasting state, and maybe by tapping into something called autophagy, we're able to help MS potentially with Metformin. And so anytime there's an MS Congress, there's always mutterings and, and a couple posters here or there, kind of looking at what we might be able to do with Metformin. Now, when my patients have both MS and diabetes, and I see them on Metformin, I am delighted. And there's been a handful of patients where, off-label, because it's not approved, we have in fact put them on Metformin carefully to see if we can slow down their disease.
Okay, great, thank you for that. You made me smile when you were talking about the wire. I have to tell you why. I almost started laughing. I used to tell people that it's like a dog chewing on your wire, like from an old TV set, right? And the dog gets behind, dog gets behind the, behind the cabin and starts chewing on the wire, and all of a sudden, you have static. And you don't know where that's come from. And by the way, everybody, this was before HBO, all right? This was before the internet. This was before all these other things. But we used to be able to say that, you know, a dog chewed up the wire, or started chewing on the wire, and you got static. And you got, you're, you're, you're looking at the TV, and you got all this interference going on. And that's what's going on in your brain when you have the sclerosis covering your, your, you. Yes, thank you, and that's a good word for it. And, and so I was giggling when he was talking about just having this cord in his hand. All right, good, it's going forward. All right, so we got two more things on the original list that I want to hit up, and then we got a lot of questions. And we even got a lot of great comments, so I want to read those to you as well. So going further now, we're going to talk about fatigue and pain management, all right? Now, obviously, they're, they're separate, but they're all also together. So, so being, with too much pain can cause fatigue, fatigue can cause pain, I'll let you talk about both, though.
Absolutely. So when we look at someone impacted by MS, we can't just look at attack, no attack, new MRI lesion, no new MRI lesion, and then assume that we're doing good by them. Because in the setting of MS, you can develop a lot of chronic symptoms. Chronic symptoms are things that suck, that impair the quality of your life. And I'll give you an example of someone that has an attack of a burning sensation of their left leg, which is terrible. And maybe after steroids and time, it mostly goes away, mostly. But when they get overheated, or when they're tired, their leg burns again, right? They have accrued a little bit of disability, and they now have a chronic symptom of a leg that feels like it's burning when they get overheated or tired, right? And all too often, we see someone with MS collecting these chronic symptoms. The most common symptom in MS across all age groups and types of MS is fatigue. And it's the kind of fatigue that friends and family generally do not understand. You know, in American culture, if you walk up to someone and say, "Hi, I'm tired," they'll say, "Yeah, me too." Like, it's like a call response, like, "How are you? I'm fine. I'm tired. So am I." And, and that's a bummer in the setting of MS, because the person that says, "Yeah, me too," they have no idea the kind of fatigue that you're experiencing. The best way that I've come up with an attempt at trying to explain MS fatigue to like a spouse is I'll say, imagine that you went to work on Monday, and worked a full day, and came home and had dinner with your family. And then when your family went to bed, you stayed up all night. So don't go to bed, watch YouTube videos all night long, or what have you, and then in the morning, take a shower, put on some fresh clothes and go to work, work all day, come home, eat dinner, and then don't go to bed again, right? So two nights with no sleep, and now you go to work on the third day. And as soon as you're done with work, I'm going to meet you at the door of the work, we're going to go on a walk, and we're going to talk about fatigue. Because it's the kind of pathologic fatigue where you're just trying to keep your eyes open in trying to make eye contact and take in what they're saying, and you're, you're almost falling asleep in your soup. And it's the leading cause of loss of work amongst people with MS. So people with MS don't leave the workforce generally because they lose their ability to walk, because you can work with an assist device. People leave the workforce because they're so tired they can't process. And I'm going to take it a step further, because there's really three kinds of MS fatigue. There's more, but there's three main kinds of MS fatigue. There's what I call pathologic fatigue, which is what I just described to you, where you're exhausted, and you got a good night's sleep, but it sure as hey, hey, does not feel like it. The second kind of fatigue is a motor fatigue, where you start exerting yourself, and as you keep attempting to move forward, you become motorically weak, your legs become weak. Not tired, but like weak, like they don't work anymore, and then you literally have to sit down and rest before you can keep moving. And the third kind of fatigue is the most evil, and that's cognitive fatigue, or what I call cog fog. Where someone with MS starts the day with all the cognitive energy they're going to have, and they can do all the things. They can, they get their best work done, they do their best meetings in the morning. And as the day goes on, their cognitive energy drains. In the second half of their day, they make errors, they can't think clearly, they say silly things, and it's a real disaster. So fatigue is a monster in MS. And I'll shift topics and talk a little bit about pain. Now, remember how I said that my professors, when I went to med school, said that MS only affected T cells, and they were wrong? They also told me that MS didn't cause pain, which is completely and utterly wrong. So, Dr. Griffin, if you're listening to this, sir, you were wrong. And please don't be mad, Dr. Griffin. So, so it turns out that MS has lots of different kinds of very unique pain, specific to MS. And I'll just list a couple as an example. Optic neuritis causes swelling of the optic nerve, and it makes it so you can't see, but it also hurts like the dick. Optic neuritis causes swelling of the optic nerve and it makes it so you can't see, but it also hurts like the dickens when you move your eye. Trigeminal neuralgia is some of the most severe pain that a human being can experience when there's a pain in your face, either up here or here or here, or sometimes all three. And it's so severe that people will sometimes commit suicide just to stop the pain. It's a terrible pain. And people with MS are 14 times, 14 times more likely to experience trigeminal neuralgia. There is a phenomenon when there's spinal cord lesions called Lermit's phenomenon. So Lermit is a dead French guy that named it after himself. And what he found was when you bend your neck down, it pulls on the spinal cord and it sends an electrical signal down your back and the feet, feels like you're being electrocuted. I have patients that will, they'll, they'll turn like Frankenstein because they're not going to move their neck, because if they move their neck, they get electrocuted. MS damage to the sensory systems can cause a limb that feels ice cold or is burning or is being crushed. Now, nothing's actually happening to the limb, but it feels that way inside. Now, I could go on for quite some time and talk about several other types of MS pain, like spasticity and other things. But suffice to say that pain unfortunately is extremely common in the setting of MS. And one of the characteristics of fatigue and pain is that they're both invisible. So Stuart and I have worked together for many years and I consider Stuart to be a good friend. And I don't think he'll mind me sharing that he suffers from severe neuropathic pain and severe fatigue. And you wouldn't know it to look at you, right? I mean, you know, you got two eyes, you got the ears, you got a mouth, you know, you're talking, you're moving around. And yet Stuart, you spend the day in excruciating pain. And you spend the day with exhaustion. And so I I use that as an example and I hope I didn't just out you, but I used it as an example. Yeah, yeah, because honey, you look so good, you know, you don't look sick. Is born out of the fact that the person looking at you can't see the discomfort. They can't see the fatigue. Now, I want to end my comment on a positive note that we can treat fatigue and we can treat neuropathic pain. So if you are listening going, yeah, that describes my situation, get ye to the neurologist and say, hey, I have chronic pain and I don't like it and I want you to make it better. And if the neurologist says like, no, say, okay, send me to a pain specialist that knows how to make it better. Same thing with fatigue. There's a lot of things that we can do to treat fatigue, which can help make things better.
So thank you for all that and thank you for sharing me with everybody else. I greatly appreciate that. But but no, I was going to bring it up anyway. So I was shaking my head and I was smiling a lot while you were talking because when you hit trigem, I wrote it down, trigem in a big, big circle and I wanted to tell people what it's really like to have trigeminal neuralgia. And a lot of people want to commit suicide. There were times, five, six years ago, prior to COVID, that I actually wanted to go meet with a freight train because it was so bad. All right, there were times that the trigem, you know, it could, I know somebody that gets shockwave treatments for hers and she can't deal with it and I don't know how she lives. I mean, it's it's really bad. But another thing like Dr. Boster said is cognitive problems. I mean, they, you know, people wonder what it is that I'm not getting when they're talking to me and I'm saying, I don't understand, re-explain that. Re-explain, 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 because I'm not, you know, there's certain times of the day or with my travels or whatever is, I just, I run out of spoons, as I say, you know? Dr. Boster has talked about spoons in the past and I'm going to say it also. I wake up in the morning and, you know, by the time I get my special boot on for my bad leg, it could be exhausting and I'm like, you know, I started with 10 spoons when I woke up, but by the time I'm ready to actually get dressed with that boot on, now I'm down to two and I'm like, what am I going to do the rest of the day? Yeah. So, yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty nasty. As far as the fatigue goes, you know, it's not just being exhausted though. It's how you drag your legs around. You know, you feel like you, you feel like you got wheelbarrows attached to your legs and you gotta pull them along with you. And I'm sure a lot of you can understand what I'm talking about. But the fact is, is that I still get up and I do what I do for all of you and for the rest of the world with multiple sclerosis. And it makes me less interested in what's going on with myself and more interested in what's going on with all of you. So I do what I do for you.
There's um, there's a saying and I say, oh, you know, you you don't say, oh, you're faking sick. And the answer is, no, no, I'm faking well. Right now, I'm, I'm putting on my I'm doing okay face and you know, you you're pretty remarkable, Stu. And and one of the things that's remarkable is despite those things, you you do what you do. And so we're all very appreciative that you do that.
Thank you, thank you. All right, let's enough of me. Let's get on to the important things, not me. All right, we're going to talk about now with some of these. First off, Dr. Boster, thank you for going through all these questions and answers with me and let me chit chat as well, but I think it's important. Let's now hit some of the questions that people have online because we only have about another half hour with you and then we have to let you get some rest. All right, first thing, person asks, have you heard about a nasal DMT that may be coming out?
So so earlier today, we were talking about different routes of administration. You know, a pill that you take by mouth, an injection in your skin, an infusion in the vein. And one of the ways which has been kicked around for actually for some time is a nasal spray. And so there there's several different manufacturers that have tried to come up with formulations of easier things to in to 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 take into your body. One of them that I thought was really interesting was combining a nasal spray route of administration with gold nanoparticles. So what's a gold nanoparticle? Nanoparticles are little bubbles that are smaller than a cell. And so they can literally just pass into a cell. And you can actually put medicine in inside the bubble and then it can cross the cell membrane. And so, you know, I I think some pharmacologists and scientists are really, really creative. And it wouldn't surprise me if we saw something like that available in the future as a route of administration to treat MS. There's also some particularly interesting, and this is just conjecture, but right at the back of the nose is a structure called the cribiform plate, which is this bony structure. And exactly on the other side is your brain. And so you kind of raises the interesting question, could you gain brain access through the nostrils? More to come.
Thank you for that. Just got some bad news about the hurricane, so I'm not actually pleased, so. It's made another little turn and it's, it's getting closer now to me, so. I'm not happy to hear this. No, it's still another day away, so I'll I'll bury my head under the, under the blanket later, okay? All right, so next person's asking, does MS affect the health of the heart?
Not directly. It is not. MS does a lot of things, but it generally does not cause heart problems. And a lot of the neurological circuitry that runs the heart is part of the autonomic nervous system, which is part of the peripheral nervous system, which is not directly brain and spinal cord. So I can say that in the two decades that I've been practicing MS neurology, I've never seen MS cause a direct heart problem. Now, sometimes nature's too generous and you can have MS and a heart problem. And it also bears mentioning that some of our MS medicines very rarely can cause heart difficulties. Like I mentioned earlier, that drug midazantrone can cause something called a dilated cardiomyopathy. And so some of the MS drugs very rarely can impact the heart, but the disease itself, not so much.
Okay, thank you for that. Next, person's asking, what is your opinion regarding the iconic neuro sleeve? Don't go near water, by the way.
Yeah, the psionic neuro sleeve is a relatively new device. I'm not sure how long it's been out, but I I don't think it's been out for several years. And I am a big fan of the sonic neuro sleeve. Now, I have no financial relationship with the company, although I would be welcome to. But but I I'm really enamored with this device and I want to explain it to you. So sometimes when people have trouble with MS, it's because part of their leg doesn't move properly. Right? So for example, let's pretend this is my leg and this is your foot and you can have a foot drop. So if your foot drops, it'll drag along and it'll catch and you'll fall over. And so a foot drop really makes it hard to walk. So one of the things we used to do is just put like a splint called an ankle foot arthosis and just push the foot up. So then you can clear the ground. But that's not like the normal way of walking. And so many years ago, they developed these devices, which are electrical devices. And they go on the leg and when they fire, they cause the muscle to pop the foot up, right? So when you're wearing one of these devices and you're walking at a, at a delay, this fires and pops your foot up right at the right time so that you can move your leg properly. All right, and that takes care of foot drop. The problem with those devices, aside from the fact they're very expensive, is that they only help foot drop. They don't help the hip and they don't help the hamstring. So I'm going to try Stuart to demonstrate and so this may be a terrible failure, but let me just see if I can show you what I'm talking about. So see, I'm wearing pants, so that's good, right? And so you have to be able to pick your leg up like this. And sometimes that muscle is weak. And you also have to pull your knee back and sometimes this muscle is weak, not just the foot. So if you have a problem with all three of those things, those devices that help pop your foot up don't matter because the other parts of your leg aren't working. Now comes the psionic neuro sleeve. The psionic neuro sleeve, which is spelled C-I-O-N-I-C, so psionic with a C, just so that people can look it up, is a neoprene sleeve. It reminds me of like a wet suit, you know, like that kind of material. And it goes from the bendy crack, like so at the top of your leg, all the way down to your ankle. And there are electrodes embedded inside the material that go on the quadricep and on the hamstring and on the the front of the the calf and the front of the down, the leg down there. And it it hooks up to us, an algorithm on your smartphone. And it makes the foot pop up, it makes the knee go back and it makes the the hip elevate. And so by timing it correctly, you can literally have the sonic neuro sleeve help you with ambulation. And help you with not just foot drop, but with a weak hamstring and a weak thigh. And so it's not for everyone, but for many of my patients, it's been a game changer. And it's not too terribly bulky. Now, you probably couldn't wear it like with a pair of tight jeans, but you could certainly wear it with a skirt or a dress or a pair of shorts or, you know, loose fitting pants. You could wear under your clothes and it would work. So the sonic neuro sleeve is really cool. And I think that it's a tool which should be considered in people that have weak legs.
Yeah, I got a better description of from the, about the sleeve from you than when I interviewed the president of the company who designed this unit, okay? And so I was just writing a note to myself to contact them that I think I would be a great candidate for them to be wearing this, but I would not look good in a dress.
Well, we don't know that for sure, but okay.
I do know that.
I love, I love it.
Okay, we'll just leave it at that, but I've got pictures of that. You got to ask some people growing up in Virginia about that one, right?
If you wore a dress, it would be very easy to put the sonic neuro sleeve on, but we'll do it with pants.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to figure out another way. All right, next, thank you for that. All right, we have a couple of long questions. I'm going to try to briefen them as much as possible. What are your thoughts on anti-CD20s therapies like, excuse me, Ocrivis and Rituximab appear to be ineffective at slowing disability progression in people with primary progressive. So is there anything else that you can feel is needed for this? Anti-CD20 therapies in drug naive patients with primary progress?
Earlier today, we were talking about B-cell depleters. Right. So these are anti-CD20 molecules. The anti-CD molecules are the B-cell molecules. Because the CD20 is the hang tag that tells you a cell is a B-cell. So anti-CD20 is anti-B-cell. And there was, there's one point of contention in what they said because we were, yes, able to prove that we can slow primary progressive MS with Ocrivis. That was a clinical trial that I'm very proud to participate in called the Oratorio Trial is the name of the trial, where people with MS that have primary progressive disease were either given Ocrivis or dummy drug. And on Ocrivis, we slowed the disability by 25%. We slowed walking worsening by 25% and we slowed brain volume loss by 20%. Now, are those numbers huge? No. Are they impressive? Very, because the only time we've been able to do that. Now, the other drugs that were mentioned, Kisemtia, I think they mentioned Rituxan, do not have data supporting their use in PPMS, but they should work mechanistically because they're more similar than dissimilar. And there are weird situations where we might end up using one of those medicines instead of Ocrivis to treat PPMS. And I can tell you anecdotally in my clinic that they do seem to work.
Great, thank you for that. Next person. My doctor said I can only take Copaxone and no one size fits all pills because of this, I'm no longer, I'm not only shy or just shy of 100 pounds, depending on the day of the week and I'm older. MS served over 65 after many years of no exacerbations or progression. I'm suddenly twice now having exacerbations, one per year, the second milder than the first. Are there any new meds that I might be able to take, might be able to take a look at?
So I do not wish to speak poorly about other doctors, but get a new doctor.
Exactly.
If a doctor's telling you that the only option that you have is Copaxone, I frankly don't believe them. I, now, obviously, I don't have any information about you. I don't know the details and and maybe there's reasons, but I just, that doesn't sound right. And so I I think you're you're not, you know, you're not dead yet. You're only 65 and so 65 is like the new 35. And I think that there's a host of things one could consider. So my opinion is I would get a second opinion from a different MS neurologist just to find out other options that might be available to you. Because that doesn't, that doesn't sound right to my ears.
That's correct. That's what I thought. All right, so but I'm not the pro. Okay. Next person writes, what can he say about Pyra? I have had an exacerbation in years, have had an ex, whatever, but I believe my current symptoms of numbness and falling may be this Pyra. Can you speak about Pyra and how it is different from an exacerbation?
Yes, so people with MS can develop worsening. They can get disabled two different ways. There's two different ways that someone with MS can develop disability. The first way is easier to understand than the second. So the first way is they have an attack and they don't get all the way better. So I'll use an example of left eye optic neuritis. God forbid, you go blind in your left eye from optic neuritis and you can't see anything. And then we give you steroids and time and your vision comes back some. So maybe it comes back to 20 over 200. So now you're legally blind, but you have regained some vision. You have accrued disability from incomplete recovery from an attack. And we neurologists are super nerds. We like to make up terms for things. And so we made up a term for that called RAW or relapse associated worsening, where you have an attack and don't get all the way better. That's one of the two ways that you can get worse from MS. The second way that you can get worse from MS is Pyra, which stands for progression independent from relapse activity. So P-I-R-A, progression, which is independent, completely separate from relapse or attack activity. So this is a situation which is different from I have an attack and I don't recover. There is no attack, none. And slowly, the person is developing disability. And the reality is almost all people impacted by MS have some of both. And it's not uncommon that patients feel really frustrated. They'll go to the neurologist and the neurologist will be all animated and say, I'm so excited, your MRI is stable, congratulations. And the patient will say, yeah, but I'm I'm falling. And they'll say, no, 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 your MRI is great, you're doing great. And they'll say, no, I'm falling. And they feel gaslit because, yes, their MRI is stable, yes, they haven't had attacks, but they really are falling. And that's because of Pyra. So that's because of progression independent from relapse activity.
Thank you for that. Sorry, sorry to cut you off for a second, but can you include NEDA?
Yeah, so the the term NEDA or NEDA, depending on which region of the United States you're in, is another acronym and it's a
Go lower.
It's a goal for treatment. All right, so the goal for treatment, NEDA, is no evidence of disease activity. That's the goal. And it's defined in a couple of different ways. I actually follow what I call NEDA four or NEDA four, because there's four things. My goal when I treat is no attacks. So when I'm treating someone with MS, my goal is they don't have any attacks. That's number one. Number two is no new spots on MRI. So when I get an MRI, I want it to look the same way it did last year. So no new lesions, no new enhancing lesions, none of that garbage. Number three is no change on exam, right? And that's really in part where we're looking at like the Pyra. And that's really in part where we're looking at like the Pyra piece, because the exam can change over time. And then number four, in NEDA four, is normal rates of brain volume loss. Now, the MS medicines are not perfect, and one of the things that they're not as good at is treating Pyra. Some of the newer medicines can treat Pyra, but they're not perfect at it, and so that is an unmet need, and a lot of the efforts being done right now, for example, looking at BTK inhibitors, seeing that they can help in non-relapsing secondary progressive MS, make me very, very hopeful that they can treat Pyra.
Okay, thank you for that. Now, let's go a little bit further, and let's talk about smoldering MS.
Yep, so shout out to my friend, Dr. Gavin Giovannoni. Um, so Dr. Giovannoni is, uh, one of the preeminent MS neurologists in the world. Um, he resides, uh, in London, England, where he works at a place called Bart's MS, which is one of the best MS centers in the world. And, um, Dr. Giovannoni, in my opinion, really tried, did, did the lion's share of trying to coin the term smoldering MS. So the concept of smoldering MS is that MS is not just acute bouts of inflammation with a new attack or a new spot, that behind the scenes, the brain is slowly on fire. And one of the analogies that Dr. Giovannoni is frequently fond of using is, it's like a paper shredder that's placed on low, and it's just very slowly in the background eating away at the brain tissue. And it's Dr. Giovannoni's opinion, and many others' opinion, myself included, that smoldering MS is underappreciated, underidentified, and not adequately sought after to be treated. The reason I love introducing the term smoldering MS into the discussion is twofold. Number one, it's true, right? And it's honest, because a lot of patients experience smoldering MS, they experience things like Pyra, and they don't have a language for it, and it makes them feel like they're cuckoo for Cocoa Puffs, or like, maybe they're, you know, making it up or something silly like this, which they're not. The second reason, and more importantly, frankly, the reason that I like the smoldering MS concept, is if we can't talk about it, then we can't study it. And if we can't study it, we can't figure out how to beat it. So we have to call it out for what it is, so that we can identify it, because once we can identify it, we can develop trials to try to beat up on it. So I think smoldering MS is a, it's not a new concept, but it's a new term to explain an old concept, and I like it very much.
Thank, thank you very much for this. Next question. By the way, everybody, I got to ask that, nobody ask any more questions, because we, we're running out of time, and I've got two minutes still to go through. Thank you for that. All right, next, um, if optic neuritis is occurring in both eyes, is there a different prognosis for that as opposed to having this in just one eye?
Yes, so in the setting of multiple sclerosis, it is extremely rare to have bilateral optic neuritis. That's not common. It can happen, but it's, it's probably less than 1% of the time. So when I see someone that has bilateral optic neuritis, the first thing I think about is, could they have a different disease? Could they have neuromyelitis optica spectrum disorder, or could they have MOG AD? And so those conditions, which are cousins of MS, are more likely to show up as binocular MS, or binocular optic neuritis. So my first comment is, if you have that, I think we need to do a deep dive to make sure that we've got the diagnosis correct. Secondly, I would submit to you that having bilateral optic neuritis, or affecting the back of the optic nerves, the chiasm, is worse prognostically than if you have just an easy anterior optic neuritis. And so if I saw that, I would be very, very concerned.
Okay, thank you for that. Next one, next one, next one, I'm trying to figure out which order to go in here, okay? Um, next one is, somebody asked another question about Tysabri, oh yeah, how long can you stay on Tysabri?
So you know my answer to this one, Stuart. I never, ever continue Tysabri after the person dies. So if they die, I won't give you any more Tysabri, and primarily because you need the heart pumping to move the blood around the body, and that's the way that you put the drug in, so if they're dead, it doesn't work very well. Now, pre-death, before death, it's a discussion, and I am probably in the minority of patients, of, of treaters, because I don't think that there's a set time limit when you're required to stop the Tysabri. To me, that's nonsense. Everything in medicine, Tysabri included, is a risk benefit. The benefit of the drug is to slow the disease down, the risk of the drug in this example is the risk of PML. And the longer you stay on Tysabri, if you're JC virus positive, the higher the risk, and it goes up over time. And so if you're on Tysabri and your JC virus antibody negative, as long as we keep checking and you're still negative, there's really no risk. The risk is the same as the general population, so giddy up. Now, what can happen is that you're on Tysabri, and you go from antibody negative to JC virus antibody positive, so now there's a risk. And I don't think that means that you're required to come off the drug, I think it means that you're required to talk about the statistical risk. For example, someone could convert to JC virus antibody positive on Tysabri, and they may have a risk of 1/100 of a percent. So that's, you take a dollar and turn it into 100 pennies, and you take one of the pennies, and you turn it into 100 slivers, one sliver is that person's risk. Now, I don't think I'm allowed to tell you that should be okay, or that should not be okay, but I do think that it definitely means that it's a discussion on the table, and that we don't have to just arbitrarily stop. A lot of people, when they respond to Tysabri, have never done better, and I don't like to take those people off that therapy if they're doing really well.
Great, thank you very much. Next, why are we in, where are we in the CD? By the way, people, it's not that I'm a terrible reader, because I'm a great reader, it's the way some people write, it's a little perplexing to read. Where are we in the CD40 treatments being studied? CD40L treatments being
Yeah, so anti-CD40 ligands, so these are the FLEX molecules that I was talking about. So this is a little bit nerdy, um, and we're, it's probably one of the last questions that I'll be able to answer, but let me try anyways. When the B-cell talks to the T-cell, right, they talk, literally, like they communicate with one another, they do it by touching, like, so here's a B-cell, and there's a little thingy doodler sticking out, and then there's a T-cell with a little thingy doodler sticking out, and they literally touch, and that's how they communicate, right? So when the B-cell stimulates the C, the T-cell to attack you, to piss the T-cell off, it does it through a direct connection. This thingy outy thing, that's the anti, this is the CD40 ligand, that's what this is called. The arm that's touching is called the CD40 ligand. So there are medicines that are anti-CD40 ligands, so they bind that up, and they make it so you don't have that. So now, the B-cell can't communicate with the T-cell. So anti-CD40 ligands are a type of therapy which are being studied in MS, and we're, I, I enrolled a patient today in an anti-CD40 ligand trial, which is very exciting, and they're, they're looking at interrupting B-cell-T-cell communication, and the upside is they don't increase the risk of infection. And so we're going to hear a lot more about these medicines. The one that I'm studying is called Frexalizumab, and I didn't make up these terms, and it's an infusion in the vein once a month. And so it's early days, we're just now, um, starting to study this, but so far, it's very, very exciting stuff.
Glad to know you're doing that. I'm on a board for that also coming up, so.
It's cool.
Very cool, exactly. All right, so, um, you know, we can't get to everybody's questions, I'm sorry for that. I am going to list, uh, some of the accolades that people have responded and said here today, and I do want to list them, because people write them for a reason, they want to be heard, not going to give their names, though. This has been most excellent and exciting, thank you both. Another one writes, uh, Stuart, you and Dr. Boster are the persons you support to educate, your support to educate is tremendous, I hope that the two of you never stop. Well, me too, but I don't know what God has in store here, all right? All right, next, uh, a person, um, writes, Stuart, you hide the pain and fatigue very well, I don't have the energy that you have, you've done so much for the MS community, thank you for that. There were days when I met Dr. Boster, uh, this was a long time ago already, that everybody said, this guy's got so much energy, he's going to run circles around you, and Dr. Boster learned that he's got competition. Okay, so we're going to keep that going as long as I can as well, thank you for that. And another one writes, Stuart, what you do for us is amazing, and I'm going to say thank you, and I appreciate that, and, um, and the list goes on, so, you know, there are a lot of people that want to just thank us for what we're doing, and Dr. Boster, I couldn't possibly do this kind of program without you, so I thank you as well, and, uh, let's just keep on doing what we do best for the MS community.
Stuart, as always, thank you for creating these opportunities, you know, I, I'm so appreciative that we can spend some time together, and hopefully up some people's game, and, and help empower and energize and do a little education about MS.
Thank you all, have a great night, we'll see you soon. Ta ta.